I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demiers.
Here.
Robert DeSina.
Here.
Anthony DeBona. Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Nice Russ. And Rachel Ryan.
Hi, Karen.
I'm here.
Thank you. And as you guys are all aware, we're here to discuss the 2023-2024 Watertown Board of Ed budget. So springtime.
All right, perfect, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for setting up the table for us tonight. This is wonderful to be able to have board members sitting beside me today. So I'm excited to present to you tonight the FY24 Recommended Board of Education Budget for the coming academic year. And there we go. I would like to thank all of our board members for their support as we move through, you know, each year, looking at all of our goals and what we are ultimately putting our resources towards. This is just a very quick snapshot of what all that we do is moving towards. That image there on the right-hand side of the globe and the little graduation cap is not only about every child, every classroom, every day, in terms of reading, writing, and math, science, and social studies, but it's also about every child, every classroom, every day, and all of those characteristics like thinking critically and being able to be resilient and being able to be creative and all of that. A lot happens in a school on any given day, and that is ultimately what we are trying to cultivate in our students through their 13-year, sometime longer than 13-year journey with us. And everything that we do is in an attempt to be aligned, to be innovative, and to be authentic. Our budget process is one that strictly follows zero-based budgeting. It's a collaborative process and a difficult one. Zero-based budgeting ultimately means, and you guys are familiar with this, we did this last year as well, is that everybody starts at zero. So sometimes districts take their budget number from the year previous, they roll it over, and they say, "Oh, I'm going to add on a few percent." That's not how we work here. Everybody starts at zero, and they have to justify every single thing that they request or they ask for for the coming year. It's a hard task because it's not just me asking them to make a list, it's also having them go out and find the quotes and the vendors that would actually provide them services and/or resources, and they have to rationalize and justify that. It's also based very much on exactly what our goals are and how we can move our goals forward each year, and historical and kind of trends that we can bank on what we project will happen in the future, as well as what has happened in the past. You're all very familiar with our budget development timeline. I say that it starts in October, but really it's annual. It goes all year round. But a lot of planning starts in October where there's conversations on just the methodology of zero-based budgeting, but also this is where administrators jump in, have some preliminary budget meetings with us, they go in to talk specifically with the business manager about their needs, and then where there are line items where we can have growth, where we need to draw back, so on and so forth, and the building principals talk with all of their department chairs as well on what's needed in each of our buildings. That moves forward. There are presentations from each of our building principals. There's also presentations from our cabinet-level administrators, and then before it even gets to the Board of Education, there are adjustments that are made, then I propose my proposed budget. And then, of course, we're presenting to you tonight, and then in April there will be public hearing and referendum in May. So commitments and goals are literally what drive our budget. Now, we're going to talk about numbers very soon, but I do want to talk a little bit about what my role here as superintendent is. And you have a commitment from me, from my office, about what it is that I'm supposed to do during this budget process and during this budget time. And my goal as superintendent is to ultimately focus on our students. That means the students, the teachers, and their experience in the classroom. Every decision that we make is supposed to make that experience the best possible experience in our school district. So whether it has to do with buses or striping lines in the parking lot or buying pencils and resources, it's all about will it make that experience in the classroom better? Another thing that I am here to do and charged to do is to realistically acknowledge the state of our district. And that sometimes is not a pretty picture, and so being able to look at it head-on, face-on, and say, "Yep, this is where we are, and this is how we're going to move forward," is part of that job. The next thing is to always prioritize the key needs of our district. There are always lots of needs, but we can't do everything all at once. So to be able to say, "We are moving with these three first, then the next three, then the next three in a phased-in approach," is necessary, and that is what I'm charged to do. It's also my job to reliably steer the district in a consistent manner so that we're not on a roller coaster ride. If I am cutting and increasing and making it super volatile, everybody on the ride feels really, really unwell, and it's not good for the students who are ultimately experiencing that on day-to-day manner. So making it consistent and just reliable is part of the key of this budget process. And then formulating a plan for the future, not only in ways to mitigate or in ways to grow, but also to ultimately strategically place in purposeful blocks and foundations so that we can actually move forward each year. Any school district never wants to become stagnant, and I want to make sure that that's very clear, that my goal is to never have that happen for our school district. So, of course, these are all grounded in goals. Our Board of Education has four large goals. The first one has always been and based in around student learning and achievement. Again, it's about that experience that the students have here. It's about what we do in our school district and how we allocate our resources so that we can make it the best experience. Our second goal as Board of Education is to increase communication to all those outside in the community, as well as fostering those relationships and partnerships with those outside and inside our school district. And Goal Three is to ultimately make sure that we are current. One of the trickiest things about schooling is that everybody has been through school, and so everybody thinks that they know how school should be today. But things change as the years change, and so it is our job to make sure that we are current, we are contemporary, that we are using best research when we are making decisions and practices that move forward. It's also an opportunity for us to see new things and say, "Ooh, maybe that's not something we want in our school district." And we have to make an informed decision and knowledgeable one to know how we want our district to continue to grow. And the last goal is ultimately around our fiscal resources and services here, is to uphold and reinforce and manage our resources in a very responsible, and I will also say the word, conservative way for our town, so that we are being good partners not only to those who are employed by the Watertown Public Schools, but also residents of our town who may or may not have children in our school district. So ultimately, when you think about numbers, it's always about what our bottom line is, and in a school district, our bottom line is teaching and learning. That is where our focus goes to. We're here to implement an excellent education. We're here to cultivate a fair and high-quality work environment for those who are employed with us. And here's number three, this is a big one. We are here to operationalize, that is our charge as a school district, all of the federal and state requirements outlined by the U.S. Department of Education and this Connecticut State Department of Education. So not only are we trying to innovate and move forward instruction and practices, we also have to abide by the mandates that are provided to us, or not provided, required of us by our state and federal government. And then, of course, ultimately, all of this is in service of the Watertown and Oakville families that we serve every day. So we have some key investments that we are moving forward in this year's FY24 budget. You'll see that many of the investments are restoration so that we could try to close the gap on deep cuts that were made in the last few years, and then also some that are just imminently time-sensitive because we have an aging infrastructure. So in terms of schools, each of our buildings have a modest budget. They can range anywhere from, you know, sixty to upwards of $200,000 for the building, depending on the size of it. They took some fairly large cuts in their building budgets that are for all the consumables, the professional development, hello, so on and so forth a couple of years back. And so I'm trying to restore those levels back to what they were pre-pandemic time. It is necessary. It is okay to, I mean, people don't like it, it's okay to tighten the belt in certain years and have them reduce, and then they can go into their reserves and deplete what they have. But once that's depleted, things need to be restored so that instruction can continue moving forward. So that's one of our investments this year. Facilities and security is also something that we're investing in. One, we have fairly large equipment that can be costly, that is either aging out or non-functioning at this time. We need to update it. It doesn't mean we're going out and buying a whole bunch of large equipment. It means that we're looking at cycles and how we can lease or finance large equipment so that we can utilize it in our school district. We do everything from all of the grounds maintenance, as well as snow removal, as well as building maintenance, inside and outside, and so we do need the equipment in order to be able to do that. With over 600 and, I think, like 950, or maybe more than that, 650,000 square feet of building space, as well as almost 100 acres of ground, we do need large equipment to be able to move forward with that. Also, in terms of security, we are looking to restore our armed security salaries, which are, again, a modest salary back to pre-pandemic levels. They took a cut in their salaries last year in order to help us come in on budget. They are essential to us. In this day and age, it's hard to think of a building without a security person there. It's possible, but it's hard to think of it, and so we're trying to bring those salaries back up to their levels. In technology, this is, again, where we're seeing aging infrastructure, and so we're trying to close that gap on restoring the technology budget, which, again, is very modest in comparison to other districts, looking to replace two completely obsolete computer labs up at the high school, also looking to complete that next phase. It's a multi-phase plan of that 10-gig upgrade. And what that is ultimately is the upgrade of making sure that we are able to move at the speed of learning and teaching. If you've ever experienced slow Wi-Fi connection, it's very difficult when things don't download or you can't get to the next page on something, or your computer just crashes, or things can't go on because the Wi-Fi is not up to speed. That infrastructure is across our entire district, and it has to be moved in phases, but it does need to continue to be updated. In curriculum as well, we have some required mandates from the state around curriculum at the early literacy level, but this year we are working hard with the legislator to see if we can get some additional funding for that. So in the meantime, in order to kind of bridge that gap, we are looking to forward some curriculum work with adding in teachers on assignment. We are very excited about offering a dual enrollment opportunity up at the high school, where we will be, again, for a modest cost, offering students the opportunity not only gain their high school diploma, but also the possibility of a certificate in paralegal studies or an associate's degree at the college level concurrently as they're in high school. This is a huge draw for students in our community to remain in their home high school. Right now, we do have students after eighth grade. They have a wide choice to go to a VoEgg school, a tech school, a private school, a parochial school, a special magnet school. We want to keep them in-house and have a special draw here for them, and this is a wonderful opportunity to start doing that for our students. We're also looking to widen our world language developmentally to the sixth grade. That would be just a continuation of what we did last year. And then I'll talk a little bit more about special education in just a moment, but we are looking to build much more capacity in-house so that we can keep our students in district and also grow our capacity so that we can become less reliant on some of our external providers. And then this is where one of those superintendent commitments was realistically looking at the picture. This year, and years previous, over the past 15 years, we have to now look at a special education number that is real, and I'll talk to that in just a moment. This is just, very simply, a chart around what our class enrollment looks like as of October 1st. October 1st is a special date for public schools just because that's when our numbers go up to the state, but of course, before and after October 1st, we have registrations, we have unenrollments, so on and so forth, so this is an approximate number. But based on this, we are projected to have class sizes of this next year in each of our schools respectively. Class enrollment is very important to not only us as educators, but also to our parent community. Having overrun very, very large class sizes makes it very difficult for learning to happen, so we try our best to stay within a range that is doable in classrooms, and so we're happy that we're able to keep them at these levels. This next four-year look was just speaking to how our building budgets did take a cut in that FY22 year. You can see that we had quite a big drop in a number of these budgets, and so trying to bring them up to the levels that they were pre-pandemic or just during that COVID time is important so that our schools can continue to move forward with the work that they are doing. So here is the overall number. The Board of Education recommended budget is coming in for a total proposed budget of $53,957,069, which is a total increase of just shy of $4 million, which is 7.81% increase. Now, this is probably the largest increase that Watertown has had. However, there are some major budget drivers that put the number at this for this year. So this is a slide that you have seen all very similarly in years previous. Our largest expenditure in the district is benefits and salaries. So be it as we are a school district, we have human capital, and we very much look for the highest quality people to be with our students in our schools. So our total spend on salaries and benefits is 75.14% of the overall budget. After that, you can see the yellow pie slice. That is our next largest budget area, which is our cost for special education, not including salaries on this chart. Now, you can see that right now our special education costs are coming at 11.19%. In actuality, however, special education costs are more than that. However, we are doing some things, and I'll show you in the next few slides, to be able to bring down in other areas to be able to try and cover some of the costs there in special education. There is volatility, however, in special education because when things are unanticipated or when costs go and there are no caps on them, we are statutorily required to fund special education. With that being said, the gray slice is transportation, where we're coming in at 3.4% respectively. That is a contract that we hold with our first student provider. We are doing some creative things this year in putting out that transportation waiver to see if we can reduce our fleet, and so we'll be moving forward with that fairly aggressively. Facilities and such, and maintenance comes in in the navy blue slice there at 4.4%. This year, you do see a slightly larger facilities and maintenance slice because of some of that large equipment, in addition to some majorly inflated utilities costs. So electricity, gas, oil, heat, all of that, even rubbish removal is coming in with elevated costs. And so with that, we are, we put in as real numbers as we could, but we are also coming in with the risk that they come in higher than what we are expecting. The all-other slice, which is the green one, is typically, in any given year, usually only 2%. This year, you see a 5.9% all-other pie slice because that includes everything from athletics to technology that aging infrastructure is talking about, the curriculum, which we need to ultimately move forward with. In FY22, I believe the curriculum budget was $0, so we need to move forward with that. And all the other things in a school district that would fit into that slice is a modest 5.9%. So altogether, that comes out to $3,907,631 of an increase over our current budget. We do receive federal and state grants, and so these are the ones that we know we will most likely get next year. Unfortunately, grants do plateau, and so we don't have our grants increasing as much as our per pupil costs are increasing or our special education costs are increasing, but we do anticipate these grants. So just shy of, let's see if I do a quick addition here, just shy of 15 million or so, will come in on grants to offset that overall budget amount. So, again, to be able to offset some of the large numbers that you're seeing, we are eliminating two administrators from the Administrative Union. We are taking some reductions in some of our special education costs through our external providers with simultaneous growth in building capacity in-house so that as we start to wean off on the outside external consultants that we can actually in-house provide it. We are also eliminating all of the district-level and Board of Education professional services, so that comes out of my line. You'll see that reduction there. We're also offsetting private transportation by moving to a transportation consortium, who's going to be able to give us somewhat of a more reasonable cap on transportation right now. Transportation providers have been almost doubling what they charge for specialty transportation this past year because of the shortage of personnel, and so because they don't have a cap, districts unfortunately are at the mercy of that, but we have found a consortium that will take us in. We're still in the talks of that contract to bring them in at lower costs. Again, that bus reduction waiver that I talked about, and something that we have been going back and forth with because it is a fine balance for our community, who we are always happy to have use our fields in our buildings and facilities, but if we do a strict 100% enforcement of facility rental fees and field rental fees, there is some revenue that may come in from there. Not a lot, just some, and that may help as well. In addition, incoming tuition for special education programming, we'll be looking at that as well. And then also reduction in overtime hours, which I will tell you how we would be able to gain that, and then a reduction in legal services. In order to achieve those reductions, we would look to restore a secretary that was eliminated last year, look to restore a custodian that was eliminated two years ago. Again, adding in some of the programmatic personnel for the special education team so that we can whittle down on the external consultants, almost a one-for-one type swap, but that is contingent upon our capacity building. And then also looking to that curriculum teacher so that we can move forward with the curriculum mandate, even though we are looking for more funding for that mandate. And then, of course, the restoration of the armed security officers. And with our uptick in medically fragile students, we have looked to funds for a nursing supervisor who will help us with our high number of students with diabetic needs, as well as other physical needs that require a nurse on a daily, multiple times a day. So the current landscape, this is an image you saw in last year's presentation, where I talked a little bit about a tipping point of what's really important to look at head-on about rapidly increasing special education costs. We have, at this point, in terms of special education costs, ultimately tipped that line. Probably three or four years ago, it tipped. This doesn't happen overnight. It happens over 10 to 15 years. And so by tipping over that line, last year, we were able to come in on budget because we received emergency funding from the federal government. The year prior to that, as you know, we were here for an appropriation because of our large special education costs. The ball has tipped over that line, and so our special education costs are at a level where it would eat up any of the other pies ultimately that is in our image, in that kind of budget image of the overall budget. So what this is telling us as we move forward in this image is that widening gap of that pink shaded area is growing larger, and it just means that we have to find more to cover that widening gap. And so we are looking to do some drastic changes in how we are building capacity in-house for special education. However, it's not a one-time, one-time annual fix. It's something that will happen over years to come. So with that being said, our budget request this year is an attempt to be the step in the right direction of trying to right the ship in where this ball is now. This is just another graph that shows how grant funding has been working for all districts, not just ours. The red line is the grant funding. You can see that it's plateaued. The blue lines are the per pupil averages across the state of Connecticut. You can see that the PPE amounts, what it costs to educate a student, increases each year, and our grant funding stays low. And so that kind of blank space in the middle is where we are then, as a municipality, charged to fill in the gap. So, again, the total proposed budget is $53,957,069, with a total increase of $3,907,629, with a 7.81% increase. And I also just wanted to share this as well. This is, these are districts in our District Reference Group, or what they call a DIRG. We are all DIRG D. You can see that everybody's requests this year have been elevated. Along the right-hand side there, Colchester's coming in the highest at 8.99. We are, you know, toward that middle-high group, but everybody is coming in elevated. And I believe everybody is experiencing these special education kind of increases. So there is a lot of hard work that your Board of Education will continue to do, along with myself up at Hartford and with the legislature, to not only look for more funding, but also to look at how the legal landscape can help provide some relief for municipalities on supporting our students. We 100% stand by supporting all of the students that we serve, and, you know, we love and care for all of them, but we do need some help from the legislature on how to keep the ship afloat. Also, it's also just super important to know that there are always some areas of risks and volatility in any budget. Benefits, of course, respectively, we can project out based on what our insurance company gives us. Of course, if there are times, though, when we have unexpected claims that come in that year, there may be some volatility there. Special education, as you know, and as I've been speaking to it, can be one of our most volatile because if we have students who unanticipatedly move into our district, that can impact us. We do have one bargaining unit who is up for negotiations this coming year. It is our largest bargaining unit, and so there is a little bit of risk assumed there as well because we can never project exactly where we land. And then, of course, if there are any emergencies, but I do believe COVID should not be rearing its head again, so that is a good thing. The key for us is to think always one step at a time. That is really the only way we can do this, is one step at a time, because we can't do it all at once. But we're being very careful that we don't go backwards. We have to keep taking one step forward. So if there are any questions tonight, I know all of you received the Green Budget Binder. If there are any line items you'd like to go into in detail, we have our Cabinet Administration here, as well as our Board of Education, who'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to start?
Yeah, I'll start. Good evening, thank you. What is the reality of getting more money from our government?
So I think it's a long battle. I think to think if anything would be done very quickly would be a mistake. I do think, though, that they need to hear the noise from districts, and I do think our districts are all across the state of Connecticut feeling very uncomfortable in where we sit right now because everybody's over. It's Boards of Education, it's town councils, it's municipalities that write letters to the legislature to say, "This is not possible. What can we do?" I know some districts have already started that. We will also do the same. So I would think it would be a mistake to think it would happen quickly, but it is an effort that needs to be made, for sure.
Gary?
How many special needs do we have, students or whatever?
Yep, so I think we have, and I'll work in approximates, about approximately 450, maybe a little bit less, of students who have eligibility for special education services.
And that's throughout the whole district?
Correct.
And how many categories are there to classify them, you know?
That I don't have off the top of my head, maybe. Do you know how many? There are 13 categories.
13 categories, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, how come they don't show the class sizes in the high school?
Oh, so class sizes in the high school typically depends on what courses we are running. So you can range anywhere from classes that can have, you know, as low as 13 students if it's a specialty class, like an AP Music History or Theory, although I think that one might even have less, to a class that has many more, up to like 28 because it's Algebra I, and it's a prerequisite math course. But ultimately, depending on what our course offerings are, that's what will determine the class size.
Anyone else?
One of your graphs shows the money that you say is projected federal and state grants?
Yes.
Quite a bit of money there.
Yes.
So we can add that up, add those totals?
So those all offset what the budget request is. So of the $53 million that I'm requesting, just around that $14 million, a little bit, I think it's a little bit more than that, goes straight to the town to offset that $53 million. So it's not in addition to the $53 million at all. So really, then, the municipal carry of the grants, let's do some bad math in my head, 53? Yeah, just about that would go to the municipality.
On the same page, the graph that you show, you show special education in here. Where is education? Where does that fall in here? Kids who are not in special ed?
Yep, are you looking at the pie graph?
Pie graph?
Yes. So that is... So that is ultimately the all-other and the salaries and benefits. So all the other students who don't receive special education services are with a teacher, a high-quality teacher in the classroom. They receive our day-in, day-out classroom experience, and all the things in the all-other pie. The curriculum goes to them, the technology experience goes to them, the athletics opportunities goes to them. Those also go to our special education students as well, but that is for all of our students. In addition to that, our special education student pie is there, because they receive more services and more support. But to your point, Mr. Vitalek, if we are able to manage how we can, and I'll use the word "cover," and maybe I'm not using the right word, but cover the special education costs, then we can allocate more to technology. We can allocate more to curriculum, we can allocate more to some of the enrichment experiences. So maybe I wouldn't only say, "This year, I'm only going to do 1/8th of the phase of the 10-gig, I want to do a full third of the 10-gig and move it faster." But right now, we just have to prioritize what gets what, very tightly.
Okay, I have another follow-up to, I guess, to my question I asked last year.
Yes.
About consolidation of efforts between the town and the Board of Education. You're asking for equipment for snow removal, and so is the town. And I guess, has there been any movement and collaboration to have a shared services with the town to reduce cost?
Right. So I think that is definitely, and I'll look to Mr. Ramo in just a moment as well, because I don't want to speak out of turn, I think that's definitely an opportunity. I don't want to misrepresent, however, what is the actuality, though, of the footprint of our town in our school buildings. So what I mean by that is, when snowfall happens, I know that the town trucks, and I know because I'm on text with them in the morning trying to open our schools, they got to go out and they're covering all of your roads, they're covering all of your lots in town, they're covering all of your parks and all that kind of stuff. And then, I'm pestering them on the other end, saying, "I need to open school, I need to open school, and I don't want to delay, let me see where my custodians are with opening up our lots." So one thing, if we were to start to look at that in a very serious way, it would be to look at the operations of, can we actually handle a reduction? Or would it be shared services in terms of just equipment in order to be able to actually get the job done? Because what would be a mistake is if we make a reduction, let's say, in personnel or a reduction in the actual equipment, and then the footprint is so large that we can't cover it. And then businesses can't open, or schools can't open for the day, and we have to have another closure. So as long as we've looked at all of those details and made a concerted effort, I do think we can, and we can certainly continue those conversations. But as of now, my observation has been that the footprint of the town has been very large, and our buildings are large as well, and so to tack ours on in any way, I don't know how feasible that would be.
Well, I guess I don't look at it as necessarily losing a bunch of positions, but your management staff would be one management staff versus two. So you would start realizing the savings by consolidating just by that. So, and I guess that's not the only end that I look at for consolidation, you know? Both sides have janitorial staff and things like that, that we should be looking at to reduce those numbers. I'm not talking about the savings, but maybe those savings that we get can fund some of the things that you're talking about. But I think it's, I think it's an exercise that's important for the Education Department and for the town, for the town side, is to find monies to be able to do stuff for the town. You know, because I look at your budget, and I shudder to the fact of you're asking for a lot of money, and I'm sitting there saying, "Where's it coming from?"
Right.
Right? Where are we getting this money to be able to fund this? And we have to go to the taxpayers in town, and their electricity almost just doubled, their, you know, the cost of eggs and all this other kind of stuff is going crazy, and you're asking for a lot of money. And that scares me.
Yeah, yeah, it's scary for us, too, and I totally understand it, because as their electricity doubled, so did ours, and it's a little frightening for everybody, I think, in the boat. I would be happy to do that exercise and to look at what the prototype would look like operationally to have those shared services, and Mr. Ramo and I have already been kind of tossing this around, so happy to do that.
Dr. Villanueva and I have had several conversations on trying to look at departments that we could combine. We actually had some discussions on moving some items over into the town budget to help them keep their MBR at a lower rate. But just understanding that, of course, that's going to raise up the town budget side. So, in those discussions, we looked at the equipment that they're trying to purchase, and we're just not sure if that would work, because we really don't track what our equipment is being used for. So last night at the town council meeting, you had approved some software monies to be transferred over. We're going to be buying software to actually start tracking this thing so that we better understand how our equipment is being used, and to see if we could actually cut out a piece of time that we could allow that machinery to be used elsewhere. So my suggestion would be, and I believe Dr. V is in the same agreement, is that right after this budget cycle, that we seriously sit down and start looking at next year's budget and start having those conversations to see where we could blend services. Maybe it's in payroll, maybe it's in HR, maybe it's in maintenance, whatever those things are. But I think those conversations should be had so that we're all on the same understanding on where this is all tracking.
Years ago, we used to have a committee called Shared Services, and we looked at a lot of those issues back then. What we found was, it didn't cut personnel.
Right.
You needed the same amount of people to clean the town hall and maintain it.
Right.
And you needed the same amount of people to maintain your buildings. The only thing that we saw that you might have been able to have was one supervisor on one shift and one supervisor on the other shift, instead of two supervisors on the same shift. But the funding was so small that what it was going to offset the quality of work became an issue. But we did feel, when the Board of Ed and the town moved here together in this building, that there should have been the conversations that you're going to have. I'm going back quite a few years when this was looked at, but I think it deserves to be looked at again. I don't think you're going to find personnel that you can cut, but maybe you can find other ways with shared services to do it. Maybe in equipment or something else, I don't know. But I did have another question. I'm not clear on how many new positions there are.
Sure. All right, so when, let me go back to it. Oh, sorry. Thank you. All right. So it would be nine new teaching positions with the elimination of two administrative positions.
All right, so now, and these nine are in the classroom with the students?
Correct. And what also needs to happen also is a reduction of six external consultants.
Six what?
External consultants. So right now, in terms of, and I say that with an asterisk and a caveat, because that is contingent upon our ability to do certain in-house training over the course of this summer in order to be able to do that. So the reason you see these people is because we have people who come in from the outside that service our students with autistic needs, nonverbal needs, so on and so forth, they have specialty qualifications. Typically, the salary for people with specialty certifications like that from the outside is very high. And so, tacking on to a school district contract is not usually the best financially for that person. However, if we can build capacity in our own people, then we can reduce the number of people on the outside. So although you see nine teaching positions, you would see a direct offset of two administrators and six external consultants on the outside to help offset that piece.
Are those consultants full-time?
They are. Correct.
How are our textbooks? Are we up to date with textbooks, or are we still using old ones?
Correct, unfortunately, we're not. But what is fortunate of now is that we have quite a bit of digital materials that are available.
Could you talk more into the mic?
Yes, of course. So textbooks, we, and I'm saying this wide-ranging and generally, some things that we've needed to have replacement of, we may have been able, so for instance, like math, we replaced last year because we needed it, it was an absolute necessary investment. However, we have started to move away from the use of textbooks, and now we can use a lot of digital subscriptions that keep things more current and up-to-date. And so, what we would have spent on certain textbooks, we may have been spending on software or on digital subscriptions for other resources that we can use. But, for instance, the early literacy mandate that has been brought down from the state that we are required to put in, we are unable to afford that this year. And so the reason for the curriculum personnel is to have that person do the work until we can get more funding to be able to purchase those resources. Those come with large ticket prices. So we costed out one program for literacy from K to 5, and it was $800,000. We just don't have that type of money in this budget. And so, we can put in a salaried person, you know, on the teacher's contract to do that work in a way, and use some of our digital resources in the meantime, while we continue to work with the legislature. In this area, I do think there may be some funding from the state, just because all districts are in a situation right now to have to do this.
And my other is, the computers?
Yes.
Are they up to date?
No, and so that's why we have...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Oh, no, that's okay, that's why we have in there, we have two computer labs that have been waiting for many years to be replaced, and now at this point, they just don't function. And so we have no choice but to put them into this coming year's budget so that we can actually replace them, or else we don't have the opportunity to run those courses for those students. Of course, we look for the best possible way in order to financially do this, so we can do leases, we can do short-term contracts so that we don't have to buy in bulk. You can imagine that if we had to purchase 100, you know, specialty graphic computers in one shot, it would be an astronomical amount of money. So we are able to use some lease-year-over-year-type finance plan so that we can do it in a kind of phased-in type of way, but that will help us redo two of our labs. We have more labs that need to be redone, but we are going to move with the two high school labs for now. And again, each year, we hope to restore that technology budget so that we can keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that most students have Chromebooks or some other device that the school system gives them. What's the function nowadays for the computer labs versus those computers?
Absolutely.
When I was in school, that was, the only computer was the computer lab.
Right.
Now, they're carrying around with them.
So when we all went to, it was probably you went into a computer lab to do some typing?
Orgon Trail.
Exactly, or something, Orgon Trail, and you were learning how to download something, right. So these days, we have all one-to-one Chromebooks, which are, if I were to put them on a range of sophistication in terms of the device, the Chromebook is probably the lowest-level type sophistication, but it gives a Chromebook in every hand of every student. And all districts have gone to that now. That is for their everyday use. They can write their essays on it, they can patch into the resources they need from the class. However, when you get up into the high school and you have specialty visual arts classes, you're getting to the CAD lab, you're doing architectural drawing, or you're doing visual graphics and creating video editing, or you're creating photo imaging and that kind of stuff, you can't do it on a Chromebook. So that's where we have the CAD lab, which is what we're replacing, as well as the graphic design lab. So these are specialty computers for those types of skills. And those are the skills that the kids leave our district with, and they are skilled to be able to do that when they go into their profession. The Chromebook is an everyday tool, kind of like your paper and pencil binder, that has been replaced.
Gary?
What I was reading here, you said you need more money for special needs, and why do you want to cut back on alternative education programs?
Yes, so if I could see where you're looking at, I can speak specifically to it.
It's in the green book, the notebook?
Yep.
Under, it's on...
Is that the shift from consultants to teachers?
It's for special educations, curriculum, technology.
Okay, that may be a shift in how we're utilizing our consultancies right now. So if we can have an alternative education experience in-house, and I could do it with our in-house staff, then I don't have to outsource or outplace our students to go to alternative sites outside of our district that come at a very high premium. I think that's what you're looking at.
The pages aren't numbered, so I don't...
My apologies.
Try to count the pages, if you want, you know? And then the other thing is, I know you said that the expense is pretty high when we send certain students out of the district.
Yes.
But when we, you said we have a couple of students coming in from like East Hartford, West Hartford, and the state only allows you to charge so much for tuition? Are we getting the full amount, or are we just getting a percentage?
So we get a tuition, and then any special education services that we provide, we charge for those as well. There are times, however, that when there are specialty circumstances, and sometimes it's a DCF matter, or sometimes it's an other type fragile situation, they are exempt from being charged in that manner. So that's also something that we go up against. But those who do come into our district, which are few, that receive services from us, are invoiced and billed for it.
Okay. That's it for now.
With the current plan and the current budget in front of us, I'm trying to bring some of the special ed services back in district versus sending them out. Do you have an estimate of roughly how many students you think you'll be able to keep in town versus transporting them out?
Yeah, so I can get you exact numbers, and I can follow up after tonight, but just this year alone, like we mitigated by opening up that program, moving from high school to, from middle school to the high school, we mitigated at least 10 students going out. If we didn't have that program, 10 students would have automatically started the year outplaced. We've also mitigated a number of students at the elementary level to be able to remain in district. We're trying our best, again, special ed is tricky, because we're supposed to make decisions around the PPT table specific to the student needs, and finances cannot hinder that decision-making. So we won't do that. However, I am very proud of the team this year for holding the line and keeping, you know, students in. So we have mitigated at least 10 at the secondary level, at least four or five at the elementary level from going out. So that's one way to do it, just to hold from more going out. We had a couple of students also return from the outside, and that is hard to do, because we have to repair those relationships to say, "We once didn't have a program for your child, but now we do, and so we invite your child to come back, and you can feel confident that we're going to service them here." So that was a bonus as well this year. So in terms of, as we build more in-house capacity here, I don't think you're going to see large program growth next year, but what you'll see is building capacity in the personnel so that I can start to wean off of the external consultant fees. After that, and there's more capacity in-house, then you can start to see programs grow. The alternative education, however, I do believe will be an opportunity to build that program in a small phase next year, next year in-house. It's very easy to say that you're going to open a program and it's up and running, but it doesn't mean that it's going to go well. So we have to let our summer happen, where trainings can happen, and see where we are, and come back to this. That's why there is a little bit of risk to this model, but we do have to do something drastic at this point to start to get, you know, our growing number under control, so we are giving it a go.
And since most years, the main increase is the special ed, how would you kind of rate the quality of the special ed services that our town provides versus surrounding towns compared to Waterbury, so on and so forth?
So I would say that everybody has their pros and cons. I'm very proud of our special education department here in the district. We do right by our families, we do right by our students. I know that many families try to come to our I know that many families try to come to our district to be part of our services. So that's a wonderful thing that we do for our students and our families here. We do do it right. I know that we don't please everybody, but there's always opinions around the table when it comes to special education, but for the most part, we are doing the right thing.
And I guess the second part or follow-up question with that is if people from, let's say, surrounding towns say, okay, Watertown, special ed, it's great, so on and so forth, and we also say that the services we provide for our special ed students are all mandated by the state, I guess the question is, why, we'll use Waterbury as an example, why isn't Waterbury's special ed as good as ours? What kind of makes our services better? I mean, I guess one question, are we spending more compared to other towns? But what's kind of the uniqueness about our town and our special ed versus all the other towns that in theory are providing, or should be providing the same services?
Yeah. I think there's lots of special education services in a lot of districts that are going well. So I can think of like the top five districts in my mind that are kind of special ed models that I'm like, oh, they do a really great job and we don't do as much as they do because we just don't have that continuum of programming. So there's always something to aspire to. Without me sounding negative in any way, I do think sizes of districts count. So you use the comparison of Waterbury. Waterbury is astronomically larger than we are, and so by sheer fact of number and population, you are going to be in a smaller setting in Watertown because we just have a fraction of the number of students and people here in this, in this district. I also think parent involvement plays a role as well. So depending on where you are, whether you're in a rural or urban or suburban situation, there's different levels of parent engagement. And I don't want to be reductive to say that if you're in this type of district, this is the type of engagement you have because it's, you know, it's a mixed bag wherever you are. But I do think the parents of Watertown also are highly engaged when it comes to their student's special education experience. So it's not a matter of we're spending more than others. I think there's just different variables in each district that make the programming feel different in different areas. I do want to also just tout, we are very strict with residency. So we have a residency officer that does residency checks on new registrants. We do residency checks on all students, even if you've been an existing student, kindergarten, third, sixth, ninth grade. We are relentless when I think about residency, that if you are not supposed to be here because you don't have a Watertown address, you are not supposed to be here. So there are no exceptions that I've given this year. There may have been one or two in the previous years because somebody was in their senior year and they were moving in, you know, like April, and they wanted to finish out the last three months of school to graduate with their class. So in those types of ways, residency checks are very, very important to us, and we do hold the line very hard on that.
I think what Jonathan isn't saying is we're aware that Waterbury, for example, is saying to parents, we can't provide that service, go to Watertown. How can they get-
Waterbury, you say that?
Yeah. How can they get away with that?
I've not heard them say that. But if you tell me who said that, I will give them a call personally.
Well, we've heard, we've heard it from several sources, and we know with numbers moving into town, that they're being told somewhere how great our system is, and so they're coming. It would be interesting to know if many of those students that have come from Waterbury were told that.
That would be interesting if they were told that.
Yeah.
That would also be part of their family's right to be able to go back to Waterbury and say, you have to follow the law.
Right.
So.
The other question I had is, I know we only have to provide services to a certain age, and I know that it's all confidential. Can you say if we have any of the students that are costing us a lot of money, are they reaching that age where we're going to lose them?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes. Yes.
Lose them in a good way, not in a bad way.
So the age is 22 years of age?
Right.
That was increased by one year. It used to be 21, now it's 22. So we do have students who age out each year, well, most years. We do have a good group who are aging out this year. So again, as we hold the line on how many students we're trying not to outplace, we are trying to also shrink that number that's already existing.
Okay.
Yeah. So that is good.
Good. Thank you.
Gary?
Has the Board of Ed looked at any ways at all how they can bring income into the town or into, you know, the system itself? Because I just, you know, I've seen like in, reading the paper, other towns that they, they're offering like, you know, the adult ed programs, they get, I don't know how much you guys bring in from the football games when you, when they're-
Right. Yes.
And then like now, I see they're advertising for putting signage up at the fields.
Yeah.
And what else? Oh, and I don't know, one town, they just said they're offering concerts, and then they're bringing money in that way. So I don't know if it's something, if there's something to brainstorm on or something.
I will put my head towards large income revenue and see, see what that may be. It's a little tricky for public schools just because we are nonprofit. We do have a number of groups though that do fundraise and try to self-sustain themselves. So for instance, our musical theater group at the high school, they have zero budget from our operating budget, and so they fundraise themselves through ticket sales, sponsorship from the community, and they run their entire theater program on their own. We do provide some of the stipends for some of the personnel who oversee, but ultimately they're self-sustaining, including gate, gate costs for football games and such like that, that goes right back into athletics, that does not come to our operating budget so that they can pay for athletic transportation to go off-site and, you know, things of that nature. Things that are, in terms of athletics in our operating budget are like uniform changes, the things that we can't supplant but that are required for us to pay for. But I will put my head to that, Mr. LaFerrari, and I'll call around to some of the other districts to see where there's large income revenue. The cost-benefit analysis, I believe, of the special, not special, the adult education, we did cost out prior to my arrival here in the district, and the cost of having our personnel full-time run it versus the, I think we received just about $20,000 in terms of grants to run adult education, would not have offset the salary of the person. And so we have a regional education, our ed advance partners, who run it for just a fraction of the cost, a little bit more than $20,000, and they run the entire program so that we don't have to take on the cost of a full FTE. But that's a great opportunity because in some districts, adult education is a huge draw, and they have multiple, multiple classes, and they, they charge multiple amounts of tuition. We don't have as large of a draw here in Watertown. But I can certainly look into that and revisit that because that was done before I arrived.
And one of the, getting back to the buses and that, besides paying an X amount you pay for, do they, they charge like per stop whenever they drop a person off?
Oh, no, I don't think so. So they charge per bus, per van, and if they have to do overruns or if they do overload runs like beyond their time. So we have a certain tier of time, so the high school goes first, middle school, and then the elementaries. If they have to do another run for athletics, they may charge for that. If we're closed one day and Nanawang and Keener are open and they have to run their students over, they'll charge us for that run. But for the most part, if it's within our regular day scope, within our tiers, it's just the number of buses and vans we run.
Yeah, exactly. So I was told, they charge, like, there's a bus that goes by my house, it stops at one street, goes 100 feet down the road, stops again, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Although I have to say, I do try to minimize the number of stops. Because if we have too many stops, then the duration of time on the bus is too long, and it can only statutorily keep a student on the bus for so long. So if they can't make the run in enough time, then they have to add a bus. So I always tell the bus company when they run it through their system for the route, is please try to reduce the number of stops so that we can run as many students as possible in a short period of time of running the fleet.
All right. And then the other thing is, on your other sheet here, you have like where you had scheduled days off or something like that?
Yes.
I see where you have like every other Wednesday, they got like a shortened day or something?
Oh.
I mean, I don't know how much time the students themselves are losing out.
Right. So I don't think it's every other Wednesday. Let me just take a look here.
Just, you know, then-
Yeah. We do have early release days, and that is an offset for what we would have to pay in terms of full substitute coverage for the day. And so if we have an early release day, we can keep our teachers in the classroom and then they're released for a portion of the day to get their PD. But it's not every other Wednesday. It's, we do have two Thursdays in September, you know, where there's a holiday in that month, there's only one Thursday. When it was COVID time, you did have every other Wednesday, many districts did. We do not, we do not have that.
All right. I was just looking at it. I saw there's like 16 days, that's why I wasn't sure.
Yep. Yep. There definitely are days that we do do for early release. Yeah. And it's, and it is important because we do have to get the PD through, but we do get feedback as well from our parents as well. We reduced it from last year, from this current year, because I know we had a lot this year, so we tried to shrink it down for next year. We heard the feedback. Yes.
All right. That's it.
Anything else down there? Only, one of the last things I want to mention, it was probably nine or 10 years ago, I was sitting in a similar meeting at one of my first Board of Ed presentations on the Town Council, and the increase that the, I believe it was an interim superintendent was providing us was similar in nature to this. I think it was probably like a high 5% increase. And I remember sitting there in many different meetings, and eventually we had to make a fairly substantial cut.
Right.
It went to referendum, it failed.
Okay.
And made another fairly substantial cut.
Yep.
And it failed again.
Right.
At referendum. And it was either the third or fourth time before it actually passed.
Yeah.
And I guess my question, or maybe it's more of a rhetorical question, is how seeing numbers that are this large, 7.81%, almost $4 million, how do we justify that to the taxpayer? How do we say this is what's best for the town?
Yeah.
Like I said, it might be a rhetorical question.
Okay.
But like I said, in the past, there was difficulty when people started seeing these types of numbers and being able to, for them to vote yes on it.
So I won't answer the question because I'll take you up on the rhetorical. However, I think one way that we can offer information is I will commit to myself and the Board of Education to provide information to our community. They don't have to like it. They don't, they don't have to agree with it, but they can at least see that the number is not made up, it's not fake, it is tied to something. So they can, they have their choice of how they vote, yea or nay, but at least it can be an informed vote. So I think Mr. Ramo and I actually had agreed in another meeting that we were going to go to the senior centers and the library, so that is on the docket. I'm hitting up the PTOs right now. We will put our brains together on how to do some more of the community pieces. Again, they don't have to like it, but at least if they have the information, that will be helpful. What gets a little crazy and a little tricky is when they see the number and they think automatically, oh my God, my taxes are going up 7.81%. And that is not the case. So, you know, as you all know, these increases, when whittled down to a number for each month of what that dollar amount will actually be and what the impact is on the taxpayer, and every dollar counts, like even one more dollar for somebody who's not working and retired at this point is going to count. It's not going to be millions of dollars. But sometimes the confusion is seeing these large numbers, is that what, that's what the takeaway is. So I can commit to our Board of Education and myself giving as much information as possible to provide kind of knowledge around why we're asking for this and what we're asking for.
Thank you. Last chance, anyone else? Gary?
Sorry, again. Have you heard anything lately about what the state doing away with the resource officers in the school?
I have heard a lot about that. I haven't heard any decisions though.
Yeah.
That's a mixed bag too, right? So a lot of districts think that they shouldn't have SROs anywhere, and a lot of districts like ours think that SROs are very, very helpful. I think it really depends on where you are. I mean, I don't know what we would do without our SROs and our ASOs. They are, they're vital in our buildings. But I can also see how SROs in a situation where it's heated all the time and, you know, kids are being arrested left, right, and center, that that could come off in a very different way. So I don't know where they'll land with that. Session, I think, ends around June, June time, that's when the legislature will be done. So we'll see what all the bills are that come out. There's a lot of them, a lot of bills.
All right. Last thing is our state representatives are going to be out in Woodbury at Toddies at Saturday morning, so-
Oh.
8:30 to 9:30, I think it is. So tell the people, get out there and, you know, give them a piece of their mind or whatever, especially on the unfunded mandates.
Okay.
Anything else from the Board? Any last comments? Guys are good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for all this information and-
I'll make a motion reader.
Works for me. Have a good night.
Okay.
Recording stopped.